To get started, I'd like to welcome them to the out to our regular meeting for September, Monday, September 8th, 2014. It's all June. I'm sorry. Is that wrong?
Mr. Dawson.
Here.
Mr. Hagerman.
Here.
Mr. Dinger.
Mrs. Emmes.
Here.
Mr. Rice.
Here. Join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That will be our first item number four. Just to move these on up to Mr. Vayner.
Okay, tonight, Mr. Valada is going to, on behalf of the district, is going to do a recognition.
Yes, I want to recognize a special young man that, a special young man that competed in our National History Day competition in our district, then went on to the state level and was one of the two best presentations in the state that went on to the national level, and he was 12th out of 20 from the whole nation in his project. So wanted to introduce him, have him just share a few words about what the experience was like. Dale, come on up. Congratulations.
I'd like to thank all of you for letting me come and speak at the board meeting. National History Day was a project I was blessed, very blessed to be able to participate in. It is a project that is more than just about you and competing. It's a large project, and, you know, it encompasses all of America and some foreign exchange students from other areas, Guam, there were a few others in parts of China. But it was, it was a humbling experience to go there and see all the different, different boards and different exhibits that people had, and it was, it was wonderful to be able to look at them and see all the hard work that others had put into that. And most of all, the project is about learning. And, I mean, I learned so many different things doing this project. I learned about an amazing man who, he impacts my life today, you know what I mean? He, it's something that you can relate to throughout your aspects of life, and, I mean, it was amazing to be there. It was amazing, not just to be at National History Day, to be in our nation's capital, which was a humbling thing to see all the monuments and, you know, go by the Capitol Building, and it was, it was an amazing experience. I am, I'm very, very happy that I participated in National History Day, and I would, I would recommend it to anyone, anyone who even thought about doing it. It's a great experience, it can change lives, and it'll always, it'll always be with you because knowledge never goes away. So, thank you for bringing this project to my attention, for letting me participate in it, for letting me come to this board meeting.
You were able to do a question. Thank you. Your question was, what's your topic?
My topic was George Washington Carver, and I named it more than the Peanut Man because everyone thinks of him as this guy that made peanut butter, but George Washington Carver did much more than just make peanut butter. He, he changed lives, he stood up for African Americans' rights, and he was a great man that impacts people even to this day. And I, you know, you feel like you come to know that person as if you, you know them in today's time, even though he lived over 100 years ago, or he was born over 100 years ago. And, I mean, it was an amazing project. So, thank you.
Well, that said, thank you. We'll move on to item number seven, which is our legislative update with Mr. Hart.
Yeah, again, off the calendar day, we have the Honorable Chris Redford, House Representative of District 89, is going to come and give us our legislative update.
Chris. Thanks very much. George Washington Carver was responsible for a lot of things, among them, supporting historic black colleges, including Wilberforce in Ohio where my assistant went to college. Small work. Good evening. Thank you to Grant for the invitation a couple of times to come out and say hello and offer an introduction and then perhaps take some questions. For those in the audience, I'm Chris Redford, State Representative for the Erie County side of the school district. Vermillion City, Vermillion School District is shared by two legislators in the House. Dan Rainos represents the other side in Lorain County. Over here in Erie County, it's myself, and our state senator on this side is Randy Gardner. I think Randy's been out here. Randy's district includes not only Erie and Ottawa County, which is my district as well, but he also includes, in his district, Wood County, parts of Lucas County, and all the way into the middle of Fulton County. He and I together represent the Western Basin in its entirety and more Lake Erie shoreline than any other legislators in the Ohio General Assembly. And as an aside, as you, as you've watched over in the city of Toledo and far northwest Ohio, what's the impact's been on Lake Erie and blue-green algae and toxic algae and its impact, microcystis, its impact on Ohio's drinking water systems, it's something that Randy and I have been working on a lot lately. If you were to ask me, when I first came to the legislature in 1999, that I would be known for my expertise in blue-green algae and microcystis, I would say, as a C-plus biology student, I'm not sure that's probably going to work out all that well for myself or my constituents. But it has, and with Randy's help, we've made some progress, although much, much more is to be done on that particular issue. On the other side, I don't know if Senator Manning has been by as well, but she represents the other side of Lorain County in terms of the school district. I have been out here many times, would enjoy coming out at a moment's notice. I host and have hosted dozens of town hall meetings. I've had all, more than 90 town hall meetings, obviously many here at the library, down the street at the library, and would, would be more than delighted to come out and offer another town hall meeting if you think, or if the board thinks it's something that's, that's appropriate for me to do. The word for Vermillion down in Columbus is similar, words I should say, about Vermillion, City of Seduski, Huron, Berlin, Mylon, Port Clinton, Amory, where my daughter goes to school, Oak Harbor, is, is that these are tough times for public schools. You know that as board members, your treasurer certainly knows that. In grappling with the continued lack of attention in life, the legislature has placed on public education and publicly funded public schools. I will point out that over the course of the last three years, our budgets have been cut billions of dollars, and the impact here in Erie County I brought along does not include the Lorain County side, but it does include Erie County. Over the course of the last three years, cuts to education have totaled $7 million, cuts to local government $11.8 million, with a total impact to Erie County of $18.7 million. Obviously, we could find out specific to Vermillion or specific to any school district that it's impacted. Additionally, as, as your financial people know, as your treasurer knows, as your superintendent knows, here in Vermillion, the state provides about three cents, 30 cents on the dollar, it varies, but give or take a penny, or a percent, rather, 30% of your public funds through direct aid from the state of Ohio and then other kinds of funding mechanisms that provide additional resources. And it's largely based on property valuations. It's the same story, a different year that we've heard since the Derauld decision was first ruled on, then appealed, then ruled on again, appealed, then ruled on again, then appealed, then ruled on the final time. The Derauld decision was based in Perry County, Nate McDerauld, who is now an attorney in Columbus, he was a young man, a child actually, in Perry County going to school, and his parents sued the state of Ohio alleging, and then obviously the Supreme Court agreed with them that Ohio's form of funding was unconstitutional because it was based almost entirely on property taxes and evaluations of property at the local level. And, and as we know over here in Vermillion, when the automobile plan closed down, it had an incredible impact, incredible not being a positive word in this regard, on the school district, on the school district's finances. And that has been repeated over the course of time, not just from a commercial or industrial standpoint, but also from a residential standpoint as well. It seems the closer you get to the lake, the higher the property values are. I represent the wealthiest school district in the state of Ohio in the 89th century. Now, that's put by locals, so it probably should not be thrown into the mix. They, they actually turned money back to the state of Ohio, like to do that. In Kelly's Island, obviously, as well, one of the wealthiest school districts in the state. Traditional school districts, I know you know this, in Cincinnati suburbs as well as in Columbus suburbs tend to be the wealthiest in terms of the traditional major public schools. But up here, you still have this reliance on property tax and property valuation, which is driving these decisions now. Now, from a legislative update standpoint, people will ask me all the time, well, well, what can we do to change it? And by the way, why, Chris, haven't you changed it? Well, I vote for and I vote against certain things, and I keep my word every step along the way. Sometimes I, I may have a disagreement with a constituent about it, but I'm, I'm fairly consistent in that regard, and that's this. This budget that was just passed by the legislature hurts public schools. It siphons away hundreds of millions of dollars in taxpayer money to private, for-profit and nonprofit charter schools. And while this district has not borne the brunt of that siphoning away, each and every school district, including Vermillion, can point out either tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars of lost revenue that goes off to charter schools. If charter schools played by the same rules that Vermillion played by, that City of Seduski plays by, Huron plays by, then I think most of us would come to the decision that at least there's level playing ground. At least the buildings that you are building here are going to be built in the same manner by charter schools. It's just not the case. The curriculum isn't the case. The reporting isn't the case. The training for the teachers isn't the case. The, the, the fact that charter schools have blossomed and grown so much has more to do not with parent choice, quite frankly, it has to do with campaign contributions in the pockets of legislators and candidates running for the legislature. It's a growth industry, and it's, it's a fairly cynical viewpoint that I offer, but having served in the legislature on and off since 1999, and then an Ottawa County Commissioner for two terms prior to that, I do come to you, and I think speaking honestly and directly is, can be refreshing for some people. And as a, as a, as a, just a, in the side, I did mention my two terms as Ottawa County Commissioner. I live today outside of Port Clinton, the district stretches from outside of Genoa here, well, the Wood County line, all the way up to the, to the Lorain County line. And as I mentioned, I have a five, a six-year-old daughter, soon to be six-year-old daughter who started kindergarten two years, two weeks ago. So I'm a bit of a late bloomer, and she goes to Amory. In terms of what we can do, if I may, since Grant invited me, what the heck, I will. The Ohio State School Board Association, OSBA, has been very active, and I think increasingly more active, in advising legislators and pushing legislators to accept and support positions that OSBA would like to get passed or continue to support. Concorde Corz is an example of that. I, I'm appreciative of the fact that your association has been so willing to sit down with me and my colleagues, both on my side of the aisle and on the other side of the aisle, to bring them along, to open up the doors, literally and figuratively, to some of my colleagues who've not had the same kinds of experiences in public schools as, as you and I have had, and to offer up concrete and real solutions, advice in achieving these solutions as we go into the next biennial budget. I'm, I offered the cynical explanation, I think it's spot on, but I offered it cynically. I do think that this next budget cycle is going to be increasingly difficult as well. And friends, this is not a question of having not enough money in Columbus. It, it's a question of tax policy. The state of Ohio has about a billion and a half dollar rainy day fund right now. That billion dollar, billion and a half dollars was not realized by an explosion of the economy. It was realized because of cuts to the local government fund and to state support of education that tended to go through to public schools. And the fact that we have cut taxes across the board for Ohioans means that you have to make up the lost revenue. They've done it, they've made up the lost revenue by cutting education and local government funds. The excess was not sent back to the schools, it was sent to the rainy day fund. If we are going to change this, I believe that we need to tackle something that may, may not be on everyone's, in the tip of their tongues when they're talking about school funding, and this, this is the gerrymandering of districts. Legislative districts have been gerrymandered to such an extent that it is very, very difficult to win a general election race, a, a primary race. It's very, very easy to run and win a general election race. So the fight becomes in the primary. And if you have districts that are drawn to support only Democrats, then you, you will have a legislature that's really, really liberal or really, really progressive. We have now a legislature that, that tends to be more supported of Republican, right around Republican philosophy, but to the extreme. And because of that, there's no moderation. Randy Gardner and I are the exception to the rule. This particular district is one of only three rural districts left in the state of Ohio that a Democrat represents and a Republican at the same time. There, there's a moderation in this district that is not seen in most other districts. And in government, moderation often is best. You come to the middle on issues. What can we do about the gerrymandering in the districts? Finish up and then offer myself for your questions. We could do this. The next time it's on the ballot for a constitutional amendment to reform how districts are formed, support it. Support it if it's offered by Randy, support it if it's offered by me, support it if it's offered by John Kasich, support it if, if it's offered by, you know, whoever the Democrat may be at that time. Because anything has to be better than what we have now. We have now a process where every 10 years, the census is taken, and the legislative districts are carved up by five people. Secretary of State, the auditor, the governor, and representatives from two legislature that serve in the majority, one in the majority, one in the minority, for a total of five people. Those five people, if the majority is with one party or another, will support that party over the other. It's counter to, to what we want with moderated government. It goes against what we think in terms of working in a bipartisan fashion, and we've come to a point where there are super majorities. In the 19, late 70s, in like 1980s, the super majority was on the Democratic side. Today, it's switched almost completely. Some may suggest, well, Ohio may be a Republican state. There are a million more registered Democrats in the state than Republicans. And this is a state that tends to swing very close to the middle on issues, very close to the middle, not to one extreme or the other. We're going to, to, to bring about change in school funding. It begins with fixing the way we run districts. Because if you get people who come to the Columbus, who are willing to compromise, then you can go about the business of crafting tax policy that won't punish property owners. It will shift the burden back on a progressive income tax. In my opinion, progressive income tax that reflects worth is the better approach to funding schools. That's quite a speech. I'm grateful. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, or just go by my way. Love to you.
You said something about this district not losing many to other alternatives. Didn't you say, have we, it was over 200? And gone alternate?
Speaking about charter schools?
From our district, you're talking about, just solely from our district?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've lost students definitely to charters, and I'm not sure about the exact number of 200, I think that that was the total.
It was a total whole, not necessarily to charter schools.
Right.
Now, that's a big percentage, and we lose 70, some 100 dollars.
Well, that, that's the concern, and I didn't say that Vermillion had lost more, I said typically in Erie County, we had more in the Bronx of the charter school movement. And, and our losses in public schools are typically in the hundreds of thousands or tens of thousands versus millions of dollars in lost revenue that say are lost in the city of Toledo or public schools in Toledo or the larger cities. I don't know what the loss is in, in, in the school district, that can be calculated from up there. I wasn't speaking about open enrollment either, because the argument can be, at least those schools are public and everybody's playing by the same rules. And the long history of supporting parochial schools actually in the budget, with specialized auxiliary services, ship bus services, shared service with ESCs, shared services with the local public school, that, that long history and support has never seen the diversion of public funds away from a public school to a parochial school. So when I went to elementary school on the magical conception of Port Clinton, Port Clinton's schools didn't use money because I was going there. They didn't take a check and send it to ICS. ICS is obviously a parochial school, it's a faith-based school. You can teach certain things at ICS that, that you ought not teach in public schools. It's faith-based, just like Jewish schools, Protestant, Protestant schools, Muslim schools. But they also have a core curriculum that the state of Ohio also approves and, and supports through the state's Department of Education.
What's your position on core?
On core?
On core.
Common Core? I support Common Core. I only wish that those who support it would have done a better job of explaining, for instance, and I can go through and can mention all of, all of the things that, that Common Core actually is, and is, if you like. I mean, the Ohio State School Board Association, teachers organizations, both management and frontline teachers, support Common Core. Parent organizations, PTA and others, support Common Core. Common Core, and those who support Common Core have not done a good enough job of educating the public of what the goals actually are, what the rules actually will be. We have conflated standardized testing, for instance, from Common Core. I have voted against every standardized test legislation that's ever come before me. At a 14 on my ACT, I'm not proud of that, but I, but I, don't follow in my footsteps, Mr. History Major, but I can tell you, you ought not be judged by one or two spring days. You ought to be judged by the entirety of your classroom experience, it's strictly outside the classroom experience as well. But we don't have that approach. But Common Core does not perpetuate standardized testing. And, and that's what's frustrating for me, because as somebody who's always been against those kinds of markers, third grade reading guarantee, you know, it's a really great idea, but if you're not going to give the resources to teachers starting out of preschool, you're never going to hit the numbers, frankly, before preschool, you're never going to hit the numbers in third grade. What's going to happen? You're going to see a market increase after 2016, 17, 18, of kids being held back. And if you think a school board meeting is tough when the football coach gets fired, or when you're thinking about building, going through a building process with a bond issue, wait till, you know, 15, 20% of third graders are held back in the summer. I mean, they can't pay school board members now. They'll pay them anything.
For testing, I ran into a person before I taught. First, second, third, fourth grades, I got sick every time there was an achievement. And I, I outgrew it. But that's a concern I have, because I had students when I taught that were like this when a test was going to happen. So I don't think they're accurate.
Everyone from the Chamber of Commerce to the United States Army to the, to the National Association of Mathematics Teachers support Common Core. You talk about a group of people with the exception of the United States Army that doesn't do a good job of communicating with the public, that's the problem. In, in my own experiences, with all due respect, my own experiences, is that, that when I sit down with my constituents, they offer their concerns about school districts, a specific school district, and I'll reach out to the superintendent, the principal, and I'll, I'll suggest that they have those parents, probably not parents, recently, but I have those, those constituents come into the building and literally see what's going on in the building, before they, before my constituents who have those concerns really come to the opinion that something is right or something is wrong. I think that real-time experience, and I'll point to Howie Hovey does this over in Mylan with their senior dad, they, they bring people into the building, they let them interact with the kids and the teachers and the, and the professional staff as well as the management. And I think everybody comes on with stronger of that experience. Most, most folks I talked to, play by school, I haven't sat in a classroom in 15, 20, 30 years.
Exactly.
They ought to sit for, for a couple hours before they draw that conclusion. This is my.
I don't want to, have, or take all your time.
My sense is that you come back to these meetings.
I've been over here a couple of weeks, talking to social stuff, which is, when they said they're not allowed to teach world history, American history has to start after Reconstruction, what are these kids going to do when they get to college in Western Civ, which is the hardest thing record they ever took, or the first American history, which starts back but before Columbus? Not yes, the eighth grade gets it, and bless their hearts, but they're not as sophisticated as when they get to high school, in my opinion.
Any other questions? I think we're, any other questions, anybody?
Thank you, very appreciate, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity.
With that, we'll move on to item number six, which is our curriculum update with
Good evening, everyone. Again, I've been asked to give a little update on the drug prevention plan that we have in place, and I think we're very proud of our prevention plan because we include a All right, I want to just review what is, what's happening in every one of the schools for our drug prevention. First, we start with education. You'll see that we do something in every school. We have a second step curriculum for grades K through 5 that's taught, and it's very informative for kids and helps them remember why drugs are dangerous and so forth. There's Red Ribbon Week, that's in October, that's another week full of activities to help kids understand the dangers of drug use. We have our school counselor, Buffy Greenawalt, that attends the communities that care, prevention coalition in Lorain County, brings back information to us, the administrators, and the teachers. We also have a Bayous Anti-Bullying Curriculum, because many times kids get into the wrong things because they're bullied and so forth. So that's part of the education process. At SMS, we have a Life Skills Curriculum, we've had it for three years now, that's taught in grades 4 through 7. We also have the Oveius Anti-Bullying Curriculum, and we have a new initiative called Salt Saving of Life Together. And I've asked Josh Buckett, this was his brainstorm, one of our teachers, to come up for a couple of minutes and give us a little background about what SALT is and how it's a little different twist on getting kids involved with what we're trying to do with drug prevention.
Thanks, Jim. I'm just going to go ahead and read a description of what SALT is. Vermillion residents, neighbors alike, are searching for answers of hope concerning drug abuse and overdose epidemics among their youth. I think that can be agreed upon. We believe that these answers of hope cannot continue to rest in mere discussion alone, that we need a movement, that we need something to, to bring us toward those goals. And so we've come up with SALT. SALT is an acronym, meaning saving life together. It will be a Vermillion schools program where the staff and volunteers and student body work closely together, getting the student body to take ownership Getting the student body to take ownership of the SALT program is essential to get success. SALT is committed to providing awareness programs and social events that educate and commissions the student body to take a stand against drugs that are affecting our schools and our local communities. So the question is, how will SALT function? SALT will be a long-term program with great short-term benefits. It will initially begin in the seventh grade and progress one grade annually. With our four to five years, SALT is projected to be student-led and staff-supported anti-drug program that will reach seventh through 12th grade. The small beginnings and big challenges, at first, SALT will begin in the individual seventh grade classrooms. These personal settings will engage the student body with the ABCs of SALT. As students sign up to participate, we can hold in-school and after-school programs monthly. The ABCs of SALT are basically this, the awareness, the basics, and the challenge. I believe that we are in a generation that is highly aware and highly educated about drugs and what's happening in their community. But I think that we need to recapitulate the challenge to them on a continual, meaning quarterly, we can go in there and we can challenge them to step up and take a stand for themselves and to take ownership of this at a young age and continue the process as they grow. And so with student activities, SALT will use certain activities to make this happen. It's a three-fold event. One is sharing events, one is serving events, and one is inviting events. Our first event is going to be kicked off on October 10th. It works in conjunction with fifth quarter this month or this upcoming month so that we can create some synergy together. And it'll be a highly engaging pep rally-style, energetic, fun activity for students to participate in where we'll introduce to them what is SALT and that we'll be coming around to speak to them in their classrooms. And hopefully, our ultimate goal is that the students will take complete ownership of this and make it happen themselves. So, thank you.
Thank you, Josh. So we were thinking, you know, there's a negative connotation to drug prevention from kids. So how do we get them to buy into this? Say, we want to be, stand up and say, we're against drugs, just like our parents are against drugs, the educators are against drugs, let's do something about it. So that's what this is all about with SALT. Okay, at the high school, we also have life skills, at the health classes, Olveas as well, and you know about the random drug testing for all students participating in athletics, extracurricular activities, parking on school grounds, and junior and senior sign-out. We also will have the drug dogs coming through a couple times, three, four times a year, and fifth quarter, as Josh mentioned, is going to start in October. Wanted to give you some of the results of our drug testing that we did last year. We had 20 random tests, 15 urine and five saliva. We had 600 random students tested. What I mean is there were 600 kids that participated in one way or another, zero positive results from drug use, which is very good, as we can see, it's outstanding. We had three students that were tested for nicotine. 429 students were in the random pool, 319 students tested at least one time, then we had some that were tested more than once, and the most tested was five times. This year, right now, we had 458 students from that same collection of students. We added eighth graders that are in physical, activities, athletics. This year, the list will be updated in winter and spring. So it's a little, I think we'll have more than what we did last year because of adding the eighth graders. And we began our testing already the second day of school. I wanted to send a message that we're still doing this and you never know when it's going to happen. So we had it last week, and we had 30 suits tested and all were negative tests. And the questions you have about our program?
What was the pool last year, 600?
There were 429 in the pool, but 600 tests were completed.
429 out of 92.
I'd say around 900.
900, so should I have?
Yeah, we also have the voluntary participation from parents. We have that available. Parents have not signed up for that. It's probably telling me I don't want to do it. It's really, it doesn't take long if you've been there at all to see the testing. We get it done in 20 minutes. Kids are organized, so I get the names from the company, I create their schedules, look at them, pull them on a class really quickly, and they get back to class within 20 minutes.
I guess, let me reach out. First, we first put in, we had some complaints about the process. I don't think I helped one.
Better, better, we're right.
And zero tests, zero positives, that's really encouraging. I think that 25,000 percent would give us better. I'd like to see that 429, or 12 positives.
We had a couple the first year, and the second year we didn't have any, and now we don't have any. Two, but they can see that you consider that, you know, it's still not good for kids, so that's beaten the dress as well.
I personally would like to see that 429 grow, look at ways to be creative.
That's what SALT is about. We want kids to say, I want to be tested, I stand up for this. And that's why Josh was happy to hear its idea with SALT, to bring it, to try to, it might take us a couple of years to get more kids to say, I want to be tested, I'm going to stand up against this. That's what that's all about. Next topic, I'm going to keep going on, try to do this fast. Okay. Want to talk about a new product, Compass Learning, which is an online product. I want to remind everyone of our district goal to, every student will increase their learning at least one year's growth in one year's time. Some kids need to grow more than that. Some kids need two or three years' growth, but that is the basic goal of our district from our district-led team, and all the buildings are also working on that goal. So we were looking for something that will help us, first of all, identify where the weaknesses are of students. And we have that with the N W E A map testing. If you have students in, or children in our schools, you've probably heard about that. And what that does is it's a great benchmark tool where it'll start, we started already first couple of weeks of school, those kids were tested, we're going to have, we have results immediately, we know where their weaknesses are. Now, to ask a teacher to work on 25 possibly different weaknesses, it's hard to do that as one teacher. So Compass Learning will actually help us where the results from N W E A map go into Compass Learning and then creates a map for the students. And the teachers follow that map, and the kids can work on their own at home and study at home. And to talk a little bit about what classes will be affected by this program. So it's going to provide us with differentiation of instruction. So kids are actually working on skills that they need to work on, so they're not really wasting time or reviewing things that they already know. They might, they're not going to be bored with what instruction is. And when you say it's very hard as a teacher to teach to all those different levels, I think we have great teachers and they're really working hard, and they are really anxious to get Compass Learning into their classrooms. So, subject areas would be English Language Arts in grades six through 12. And I want to preface this with saying, we already have Compass Learning K to five. We already purchased that, it's a done deal already. So this is adding to it for grades six through 12. So English Language Arts, math, science, middle school, all middle school, science, sixth, seventh, eighth, high school biology, physical science, high school math and writing labs. We have labs at the high school, and many times it's hard for teachers to know where are these kids at. And spending some time, we won't have to spend time on testing, we'll know where they're at. And they will have individual pathways in those labs, I think will be very effective for these kids. So, really, this is affecting all of our students, general population, students with disabilities, those that are behind, those that are gifted or above, and all our students will be affected by purchasing Compass Learning. One thing we, if you remember, we've had, I forgot it, Success Maker, because we don't have it anymore. So, we purchased Success Maker and found out that it was a good product, but it still wasn't reaching us where we want to be, which is what Compass does. So we don't have Success Maker any longer, so that money has been saved. And we're, we're treasurer, and we want to purchase Compass Learning in its place. Any questions? So let me just give you the price tag. It's about $45,000, but it covers a lot of areas. It covers six through 12, reading, language arts, art, science. We have many, many uses for it.
What's SALT, can you use it before Success and make a difference?
We had, what do you think? Brain, no, no, we still have Brain.
No, was Brain, was Brain?
We still have Brain, I mean, that's a little different.
That was. We had that since day. The P F thing.
Oh, yeah. Plato.
Plato, thank you. It's just Plato. You know, every year we're finding, you know, we have some, a good product, but there's always new products created, and we're not just buying products on top of products. We're doing away with the ones we don't feel are good, and we're trying to find something to meet its place. And the good thing about Compass is once we purchase it, this year, those courses are ours, and next year would only be $5,000 to continue those courses. So we're hoping for great things with it.
What would have been the cost with Success Maker for this year?
$33,000.
So you're going to keep paying it every year with Success Maker?
No, we stopped it. We don't have to renew that.
But when we used it?
Yes, yes. It was 33 every year. So we're not, we're doing away with that.
And the program before that, how was that?
That was the same every year. This is a better product all around. The teachers all seen the product, they like it, and really wanted to try it. Yeah, it was piloted in kindergarten and third grade and fifth grade and science at the middle school.
You just said this is six through 12.
Right, and then they looked at it, the teachers had a presentation over five days when they were in school, and the teachers were, and they had a dummy account so they could look at it, and then they said, I asked you not sit, and they gave them the names. Just a lot of teachers didn't want it. And it covers all of the district, it isn't the licenses for as many kids as we have. Okay? Questions? Matrix, write the check. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Joe. With that, we will move on to our first public participation of the evening. If you have anybody that wishes to come up and speak.
Mary Ann Green. I am the band and corps booster president. And the reason I'd like to be here tonight is, is to ask some questions in regards to the fundraising policies within the district. For two years now, we have been involved in meetings with the administration as well as the Athletic Booster Club too. And we have, I feel, complied with everything that has been asked of the oral band boosters in regards to attending these meetings. Some meetings, we were actually the only ones in attendance, not through anybody else's call, I'm not here to throw anybody else under the bus. But we've also, we were asked to fill out fundraising applications, which we have done. For some reason, this most recent round hit a snafu. We turned in our fundraising forms. They are dated August 25th. For whatever reason, they did not make it on your August 28th agenda. I'm concerned, had that immediately called a school board member and said, hey, I see there was a problem. Did you not receive our forms? I knew two of them were turned in personally, the other two were sent in our office mail. And the school board member had said, you know, geez, I don't know, they didn't make it on the agenda, I'll look into it. We have a meeting September 2nd, don't worry, I'm certain if they didn't make the August 28th one, they'll be addressed at the September 2nd one. Well, as luck, we have, you guys canceled your September 2nd meeting. We had already postponed one of our fundraisers by a couple of days because we were awaiting that September 2nd meeting, and we didn't want to go outside the boundaries of your request to us to have these forms turned in first. I couldn't go back to the company and say, hey, again, we need to delay you one more time because they canceled the meeting that we were going to discuss this at. So I understand it is on the agenda tonight, but come Friday, I was approached during school hours about a situation that it was heard that we were going to be selling items at the football game. Well, in the meantime, over all of this, I had suggested a parent call the athletic director and say, hey, you know, we were going to sell these items, how do we go about it? Are we allowed to set up a table at the stadium? Do we need to sell it out of our concession stand? What can we do? And he's like, no, it's fine, you know, you can do this. You know, I said, it didn't make the agenda, it's supposed to be coming up, we had a little bit of an issue. We thought it was all clear and set to go. Then I was told that, no, we better not sell it at the game, or we're going to be shut down. Again, we have done everything the school board has asked us to do. We have been in compliance for two years now at least. We, as well as the athletic boosters, the corps boosters, we're here to raise money for our kids, for the students. Athletic boosters do a fine job of raising money for the athletics, and we do a very good job of raising money for our music program. We just want to know, why is there a problem with us? What does the school board have an issue with the band boosters that we were told we could potentially be shut down at the game Friday night when there were many other items being sold and raffled off in the stadium as well? I would really like if somebody would answer that question.
First one, I'd like, thank you guys for helping with the newly policy meeting on the fact January 1. I know it's, in the meantime, there's limitations to put on things, and it's tough at the moment. Listen, we appreciate you guys, bending your backs to trying to learn the policy. As of last Friday night, as you probably know through last school year, we've been hinting on the process not being followed, okay? This was through last school year. But at some point, the process needs to be followed, okay? So if forms weren't turned in, at some point, the lines have been drawn, we're not even allowed this. As far as we knew last Friday, those forms weren't turned in. Now, after the fact, we understand that they were, okay? So that's inter-procedural issue.
And I would appreciate an apology, because we did turn our forms in, that's not our fault. And I'm, no, instead of the threat being made, why didn't somebody say, well, wait a minute, you're saying you did turn those things in, I'll look into it, before the threat was made? I was pulled out of my office and discussed during the school day.
The children don't need to be private.
Yeah, before, before that was said, I mean, anybody could have called my phone and said, hey, you know, we hear you guys are doing this, what's up with this? And then anybody could have retraced the steps and seen that we did indeed follow the rules and turned our things in.
What we're going to do, I think we're going to talk later on about putting a deadline on 30 days in advance because it means to me, we don't want you guys, the same situation happening again, okay? So we put this out 30 days prior to the commencement of the fundraiser. There should be enough time to have discussion or to allow for the thing to start.
Okay, I understand.
It was so much harder as well.
Well, then, the fact that the band had gotten moved to another school, which threw us all off too. So, I mean, we were operating out of a different area. So, I mean, the fact that we had parents personally go to the board and turn those things in, we, like I said, we made every avenue and every effort to do what we were asked to do. There again, the question is, is we feel that we are the group being picked on, and why is that? Because I have seen other groups, and I'm not here to, like I said, Ron Meyer does a really good job of athletic boosters. I'm not here to complain about them. There's going to be mistakes made, that does happen, but there are many, many things out there that slip by, that nobody says anything about, nobody brings up, but when it comes to the band boosters, lo and behold, we're held accountable, and all we're asking is that it be fair. If you're going to say something to us, then you need to say it to every other coach and director and group in this school district. It needs to all, everybody needs to be held accountable, or nobody.
Absolutely.
We need to tighten that up, we need to meet with all the coaches and make sure that they're on board and if they're not, it's a no-go.
But, but remember that the intent of the-
But, but remember that the intent of this was to, the intent of this policy was to try to make sure that we didn't have fundraising walking over top of fundraising, over top of it, and try to take some burden off of folks. It wasn't necessarily to hold any group back. And I, and, and, you know, I apologize, I'm not prepared to really talk about it because I didn't know it was gonna be on the agenda tonight. But I thought, and I wanna go back and review the policy. I thought when we developed this, there was an understanding that in times like this, or if something didn't hit an agenda, or a meeting got canceled or something, that we, we were fine with the superintendent making a decision on our behalf when it came to a fundraiser, if timing was short. And, and that's something that certainly could've happened in this case. So, and if I'm wrong, then I'm wrong, I'll, I'll go back and find out. But I thought that that was an understanding that, that it could be approved ahead of time.
That was our understanding as well.
You know, my, my big concern is, we've denied nothing. I mean, we're not trying to stop anything, the board is any organization. And so I think our original intent was just to kinda make sure things were, we're still just letting everything happen. So we're, I, I just, I'm concerned that this paperwork process has become a fundraising prevention. And, you know, just.
Well, that's, that's a point, that's not the intent. And, and really, the, the, just to kinda expand on what, what Dave said, it's, our biggest issue, I think, was that so many groups, and, and not the band, because the band is a really well-contained group. But, but when you break up the athletics, they were all operating in their own chimneys. You know, little, little groups making little accounts of money, you know? And the, and the idea was to bring it all together and do more for the school district and the, and the athletic teams, and the bands, and everyone. And it was never meant to hold anybody back. So, you know, you're right, our paper process doesn't need to become cumbersome. It just gets for information purposes, so that we know what's going on. So we thank you guys.
Very well, you're saying thank you, so I apologize, of course.
I, I have no problem taking the heat, but I also have no problem giving it to you.
I bought a cowbell Friday night, by the way.
Yes.
Well, and I think that our, our forms are not available online, is that correct?
They are, that is correct.
We're not making it up here. So we're making the process, we've gotta jump over so many hits, we're making a part of the necessity.
Thank the band and all the parents, just, we apologize for this pain and suffering that caused. But bottom line is, we appreciate everything, we're doing to try and help our kids. We'll, we'll try.
Thank you for coming here tonight, that's, you know, we need, we'll get better at this, too, as we go.
You sound good the last time you stood. Anybody else? Introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Isabel McHale, I'm a sophomore here at Lumilyan High School. And I was wondering if we could introduce sign language into our curriculum. It is, or the Ohio Word of Education actually stated that it could be used as a foreign language, which I thought was really, really cool, because I know a few people that are deaf. I actually went to Kelly's Island, it's a good friend of mine. And we met a few people who were deaf, and we were able to communicate a little bit that we knew. So, I just think it'd be very fun to learn, and I know a lot of students are into it as well.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely come talk with you. And Mr. Blod is here, he's our curriculum director, him and I will talk. If it's possible to even get up and running by second semester, obviously, we're up and running now. And this first semester might be a challenge, but there's something we can do to, to do something the first semester as well. We'll try, but we'll definitely come and look into it. That's good to know, I didn't know that it can actually be considered a foreign language credit. So that would be fantastic. Thank you for letting us know.
Good idea.
Awesome, thanks. And if you guys want, I can even start a petition with the students, if that's what you need.
It, it, it might not be a bad idea, just so, not that you have to do that, but I think that it's good when the students get behind something like that and just to show the students support of it. It's not that we wouldn't do it anyways, but I think it's just good that you do it.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks for coming in. Anybody else?
You know, sure. At one time, at one time, there was, I really don't go into that much because it was about the time I came here, about games of chance. The board absolutely, positively did not allow it. As I taught, all kinds of things. I usually kept my mouth shut on it, but I don't think it's a good thing for the kids. Yes, I know the lottery is supposed to solve all our problems for money, it certainly is. But there are so many things, going to an athletic, and I'm asked to buy this, that, or something else that can include games of chance. I don't think that looks well for our school district. I know some of the background, because there were two board members at my time before, absolutely positive, against anything. And the band boosters got in trouble because they raised money to send the band to Toronto the year before I came. And I heard that for years afterwards, that what they were doing was contrary to what the community wanted. Or what was at least unwritten policy. I've never seen it written down. And it was the same for all the parental groups and so forth, not to do that kind of thing. It's up to you to decide. It does. It's nothing against my.
What's the simply you're referring to? To raffles or to tickets?
Buy, buy a ticket to get the game ball. The cheerleaders used to, had pins that had the number on the back. And if the number was called, they got monetary prize. They got in the round with the cheerleaders, and she's gone, so we don't have to worry about that. And I said, your prostitute made the cheerleaders. She didn't like it, but that's what it looked like to me. And I don't know what anybody else would do. And I'm not against legal games. But what are we, what kind of thing are we showing our kids? It's up to you, you have the notification. I appreciate it.
Anybody else? With that, we move on to item number eight, which is our superintendent's report.
Okay, recently, we had a fieldhouse bid that came in. And I have Mr. Reenie, that's really gonna be on the agenda for the next two items. He's going to do a facility update. And he's going to talk to us about the recent bid that came back for the fieldhouse. We did have a little bit of a setback in the bid. We were very lucky with the way that the bids have come in for multiple projects up until now. And we've had a chance to do quite a bit more than we ever thought or dreamed we'd be able to. But this bid, how, this bid did come in a little bit high. We still feel optimistic, after you hear Mr. Reenie's presentation, seeming that we can make some adjustments. But he will come up here and tell us a little bit about the bid process, how the bid came in, what are some of the options we can do. I think we can still be on track to get this accomplished. But it is going to create some adjustments. So, Mr. Reenie, if you come up and do that, and then afterwards, just, just do a general update on the facilities and let us know where we're at. Well, thanks.
Hey, filters for clarification. Really should be called Fieldhouse, which should all face three.
Yeah, there's more to it than that, correct? Sorry.
Yeah, that was the first thing I was gonna type. The, the latest package that was bid includes the fieldhouse, new fieldhouse. It also includes music room and auditorium renovations at high school. Really complete the, the center of high school.
If I, Tim, before you get started, to just, to speak to what you just said, I guess I mainly characterized it that way because the way I look at it, we're not going to make any adjustments to the original part of the music bid. That will remain as it is. We've always budgeted that money towards the music program. And we're going to make the adjustments only to the fieldhouse part of it. So, that's the clarification.
Okay, so our, our budget for the fieldhouse, the hard cost was two million eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. And the bid came in at three million ninety-six thousand eight hundred dollars. So that's two hundred forty-six thousand eight hundred dollars over budget.
But that, that includes the music.
That includes, yes.
So we'll know that that's, we're not building a million-dollar fieldhouse.
Right, right. That's right. That's all the renovations to the high school as well.
So what, what, can you break it down briefly?
Well, the, I mean, we, we met with the contractor. It was, we met with him today, boy, time's flying. It's only twelve hours. And we asked them to take a look at some of the things that we put on the list, which included technology in high school, or excuse me, technology in the fieldhouse. It included, using, reusing the mats from the, from the weightlifting facility. Included making the storage areas smaller, doors, windows, just a whole cabinet, things that we sent back. Unfortunately, nobody opens their, their books and says, here's how much Paulie's on board. You're given one number, and that's it. So it's, it's kinda of a guessing game as to, as to what exactly went on and what is running the costs up for the project.
They didn't break it out, fieldhouse, auditorium, musical?
No, no. Not unlike any other project that was big. They did, they won't do, I mean, those are, those are, are close to the desk. What, what, what was bid for technology? What was bid for paving, roofing costs? Again, we gave them a list of items and tried to pick their brain. And we are value engineering the project to look at things that can be taken out in hopes of, you know, bringing the thing in on the budget.
Do we feel we have better buying power by putting it all together?
There's, there's no doubt, you will. Yeah, there's, what we can have given was, was a good idea. I, I still think it is. I still think we'll get the best price that, that way. I didn't know off-guard you wanted to get into the budgets tonight, I've thought of budgets for everybody.
I don't think we're, I think we're all, at this point, that we're hiding.
Yeah, yeah, well, still, basically, overall, the whole project, if, if you look at everything, we're, we're there. We, if we can bring this thing in on budget, we're within, we're, we're at minus fourteen thousand dollars. And we still have, we still have money in contingency, and we still have soft cost money. So we just can't spend it this time more than we have budget. You know, we gotta watch every dollar right down to the end of the project.
So that's just if we go with this three million, and we don't have that.
Two point two million. Two point two million eight hundred fifty, yeah. We have to hold in that in order to keep, keep all our monies in contingencies for the other schools and for this school. We have two hundred nine thousand dollars in contingency for this last phase of the project.
What were our totals on the three phases, I'm sorry, on the fieldhouse, auditorium, music, what was budgeted, estimated?
The, I, I only have with, you know, I mean, we're broken out.
Yeah, did it come from above our estimate or below our estimate?
It came from.
Two million eight hundred fifty thousand was the estimate.
Right, and the bid came in at three million ninety-six thousand eight hundred. So it was two hundred forty-six thousand dollars over budget.
What was the estimate on the fieldhouse? Did it break down?
I, um...
I want to point to the listing.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, I didn't bring.
It's okay, so we're thinking the fieldhouse is about thirty, forty percent of this?
Yes, yes. So our plan is to put back together again, to value engineer this thing, and get back out, back out to bid just as soon as possible. The architect thinks they can turn things around in a couple of weeks, and we can be out to bid first week of October.
Yes. Do we have to break ground about it?
Well, our original schedule was to break ground in September, so we're gonna be in the I, we're gonna be behind, we're gonna be dependent on the weather again to get the footers in the ground. I think it takes ten to twelve weeks to get the metal building designed and built, you know, through the shop trying process. So there's kind of a wait while they're, while they're putting footers in the ground. So as long as the footers can get in the ground, we shouldn't lose tremendous amount of time.
It's a complete job, this way to go. Wait until we're all signed.
Well, we talked about, our schedule's a little bit, no, we, we gotta move out of the weight room when school ends, you know, which is, you know, June first, whatever. By June first, we have to move out of the weight room so that we can recover modeling. So I think we have like a made, a milestone made for them. It's right around that time to be done, not with the whole facility, but at least that weight room part, so that we can move all that stuff out of there and put it, and put it in there. And then, and this room is empty by, you know, the first of June, or whenever the kids are out of school. And you can start remodeling.
Tim, question about the going back out to bid. Can we, the low bidder came in today, and we looked at them. We talked about the option of maybe that value engineering, can we submit that value engineering to this low bidder? And ask them to see what that, those adjustments would be without having to go back out to bid?
I have a call into the, into the attorney, but I, I don't think you can negotiate with just one contractor.
I, I don't, I don't think, because I talked to the architect, and they didn't call it value engineering, but there's a term, I can't remember what it is, but he seemed to think, they seemed to think that you can make those adjustments.
If, if we can find a way, we certainly will, in an effort to save time and coming along.
Yeah, time is critical, too.
That's over after, so, I mean, I'll continue to explore, explore with them. Right now, we don't have a recommendation that we can make for you because the only thing we have is three million dollars.
Yeah, there would be pros and cons to doing that, that way, too. Because you might, by rebidding it, come and get better, a better bid all around, too. So I'm not saying we should do that, but we have to at least look at that option and see whether or not that can be done. Tough, you mentioned some of the things that could be adjusted. The size of the storage aspect of it could be cut down. I don't know about the mats replacing that rubberized surface. We'd have to look at each and every one of those. But I'd like to at least see if they could come and do that as a possibility that we can talk about and decide if that's what we wanna do or not. Rebid, or have them, have the low bidder just make the adjustments.
If, if we can make a recommendation to you that falls within the budget and after getting it advised by the attorney, that it's, that it's doable, I mean, we'll, we'll certainly bring it to you.
We have a, we have a special meeting scheduled for Wednesday. Should we come back Wednesday to hear back from that contractor?
Well, he is gonna, I spoke to him again this afternoon after our meeting, and he has the list. And he's working on it, and we told him that we had a special meeting scheduled for Wednesday. So, I mean, I can't promise you, I, I really don't know what, what he's gonna tell us, what the, what the value of those items are gonna be. If it makes sense, I'll email you, Phil, and get the, get the board. I certainly wouldn't cancel it this time.
We need to have a turn for our, that's, that's our, our meeting required.
So we have to know by Tuesday ninth at seven o'clock. So I'll, I'll let you know tomorrow evening, as soon as I can find out the word.
Tim, is there anything that, that, we have the estimate? Tim, is there anything that, that, we have the estimate along with the architect. Anything that was changed or right about city, that we could ask about? The variances, the change of paving, change of water runoff, anything like that?
The only thing we're, that we're made a part of this is to eliminate the asphalt paving, the asphalt part of the parking lot in the driveway. They're gonna tell us what that cost is. That, that would take a variance from the city right now. Right now, we're required to put in an asphalt parking lot and have a paved driveway. We got a variance to less, to have a lesser amount of parking places, and they improved that. So we used the football stadium parking lot, which isn't paved, they obviously do that. To be quite honest, we didn't ask them on not paving the drive and the new parking lot because it, they felt, it felt pretty strong.
What's a rough estimate of a paved drive? Is it $20,000 or $100,000?
I, I don't have a good, I don't know. I could get back to you on that. I mean, we were.
Now, you know about a forum before, was that so much for a park?
There was a, it's a thousand dollars a spot to build a parking lot. That would include some base, the, you know, the paving, the lines, everything.
Is that a city ordinance or is that the building?
City of minorities.
Is there any benefit to what we, to relocate the fieldhouse to the township side of the park?
Well, I suppose we could look. But the only thing I caution on that at this, at this time would be we have to go back and do site drawings. We have to reengineer the foundations. I mean, it would be, it would be a pretty lengthy process, and it, there would be some cost involved. I, I would doubt that it would exceed anything we save. You know, when you're kind of building codes, it might be different from one.
On, on the driveway, one of the things that did go into this contractor was that it was accounted for the extra thick base that you could drive buses back onto the asphalt. So you did reduce it now as a possibility and make it a, what do you call it?
We reduced it from heavy duty payment to standard duty payment.
I don't get, that's a private drive coming off a private park. I don't get where the city ordinance would cover a private drive coming off a private park. It doesn't connect with any public road. So I, I'd really like to get a term of the process in the public city. And is that, is that actually city property for that zone? That is, it's a, you get the outside of the extension. But I'd really like to get that ordinance, because if it really does apply, it's gonna get into the private drive. It never connects to the public road. It could save us $100,000. Water runoff, anything like that? Is that all? And we kept changing to bigger tank.
Yeah, all the underground detention has been designed. There's, they went back and looked to see if there were any other alternative designs that could be used. And they, they believe they found that most cost effective one.
Those were not just city.
Yeah, and those are. There, there's no doubt that we'll be able to find the money. I mean, it's just gonna be, just eliminating some things and picking what's really not necessarily hot. I, I'm sorry to interrupt this with me, one, one of the things just came to mind. There's six asphalt loops in there. We're gonna give the cost to just reduce the quantity to on the main court. Now, all the structure will be there as well later. The other two side courts we will win, but maybe right now that'll, that'll save, that'll save some money, you know, to be able to build.
You'd like to learn about it. How would, why would, we can't just do it with cement for over right now until, you know, with the exception of obviously with the weight room that I have there.
That's where it is.
That's where it is.
Yeah, okay.
There is, there is a athletic flooring though throughout the whole, the gym facility and the track.
But you can always upgrade. Those things are very easy. The band, which is our sir. Raise the money. Got more games for chance.
I, I really think in the end we'll get a list of items. We'll be able to sit down and decide what's the most important, what's the least important. Be able to, be able to bring it in.
Looking at the list, and what you have every day, and what you submit, I think it should be resistaned on. I think we should come back looking for a little bit. As far as athletics. We sent out an email to the staff asking them for ideas on, on the design and on what needs to go into. As far as the update, just, just general, if you could, you don't have to get details about.
I'll be real general and say we moved into both the high school and the middle school. And the punch lists are out, and they're being worked on by all the contractors. At the elementary school, the building is nearly closed. A lot of the windows are in.
Some lighting's on.
Cell lighting is in, yeah. The roofs are at least all paved, they're all in the drive. So it's a matter of getting the final windows in. Painting is starting, flooring is starting. Most of the mechanic, electrical plumbing is up in the ceilings. It'll just be another push to the finish to get everything done. The site work is, it's not going, the sidewalks are going, paving will begin soon, so. Actually, with Sanford, I'm not involved.
And what are the old white poles? I think we've signed a change.
That really wasn't part of the project per se, but I know that the district has, has a contract with, the electrical contractor to do that work. And I don't know this yet.
The new lights look good, but what's the other?
Yeah, I could ask. I'll, I'll see him.
Now, with those punch lists, we still have things to finish up. Is there a deadline or?
Yes, the deadline to complete the punch list is October 10. That said, I, I, I mean, it's not uncommon at all to be dealing with things for, later or not, up to a year into the project's done. You know, I, and I can't be specific about anything. But there's just something that comes up all the time. I'm dealing with HVAC systems. The last project goes on two years. And just sometimes there's, there's issues. I think 98% of the items should be, should be completed, you know, by October 10th or shortly thereafter.
So Tim, that does, and Shelley just adds, brought up a question that I hadn't really thought about before. So when you gave the October 9th, is that a substantial completion of the punch list?
That's the final, that's final patient, what that's.
So when you just said a year afterwards, then what, how does that work? If not, every single item is done?
Those are usually, there, you have, there, there's an 11-month walkthrough that's done after the contract. The, as the owner, you'll have one year guarantee on everything. The marker boards, the ceiling tile replaced. And they'll be, they'll be an 11-month walkthrough prior to the expiration of that, of all those items.
So you got basically going back and seeing how things held up. So you're saying that on October 9th, everything that's on that list should be completed 100%?
Yes.
Okay. We just want to clarify that.
Okay, I'm gonna keep this, I'm gonna keep this brief on the school opening. We, as you all know, got the schools up and running. It was four days past what we expected. And we knew the reasons for the late opening. It was due to the middle school and some unexpected events that occurred from some water infiltration through the foundational there. And we were able to get that flooring complete over there before school opened. We got the carpet in, we got the tile in. And there are now lots of things to do on the punch list to finish up. But we did get the schools open. The buses ran on time. I do thank the staff, teachers, everybody that was involved to help get the schools ready, because it was a really big undertaking this year, a very unusual school opening. And without everyone's working together and helping as they did, it really would have been impossible. So thanks go out to everybody that helped with that. So that really is the report out about the school opening. I think it went, for as much as we had going on, pretty smooth. It really went well. Any questions about the school opening? Okay, one real quick thing that I wanted to mention on here, because this has come up at the middle school in a letter just went out tonight with the health, with the Board of Health's approval. I'm not gonna read the entire letter, but we had a neurovirus type situation that went through the middle school this week. And so to compound things, not this week, but last week during the school opening. So to compound things after the school got open, we had some kids go down with blue light symptoms. And we talked to the board not that long ago. Last year, we had brought in a machine that really sanitizes things. We went in there to the classrooms. We sprayed the classrooms down with this mist that takes care of 99.99% of bacteria and germs and things like that. And we did our very best to get that taken care of. So we sent a letter home to the parents, letting them know what the symptoms are, what they can expect with this type of virus. And unfortunately, it's unpredictable. And we do the very best we can with this many kids that are in the school. And we just want to let people know that we don't want them to panic. And if they have any questions, though, they can call us. So that letter did go home. I did let the board know that that was happening. So on top of the school opening, we did have that, a little bit of an isolated area within our school. But that did help, that that did happen. And I think that our health people, our nurses, our teachers did a really good job of trying to just contain it, react to it as best as they could. So just wanted to add that to my report. And that's all I have.
On the treasurer's report, we recommend a resolution to approve consent to the assignment of a local school district's investment management to be here for charity, public investment advisor, EPIA, to Redtree Investment Group event of September 11, 2014. Questions?
What's prompting the move?
Actually, there is becoming Redtree. So we have investments there for scholarships, and they reorganized and renamed. So they initiated this, same group, just different name. Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanders?
Yes.
Next, I'd like to recommend a resolution to accept the following donations. $300 and two boxes of school supplies, Rainor Couture Board and Esseco Posture II. And $1,650 from prompt and donate 2014, purchase of trophy case at the DHS South hallway by the gym. I'm moving. Once again, as always, we'd like to thank everybody for their continued donations. It's a great gesture.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Harding? Mrs. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Next, I'd like to recommend a resolution to approve funding fundraisers for policy number 5830. We got the Band Booster iPad Raffle to consult with my football games. Band Booster Sale, cowbells and football games. Band Booster Paper with line taste September 26, 2015. Band Booster Food Sale, September 9th through October 29th, 2014. Oil Booster Gift Item Sale, September 9th through September 16th, 2014. Sailway Middle School PTL iPad Mini Raffle to fund the whole school ice cream social on September 25th. Sailway PTO Spiritware Sale to fund playgrounds matched with your own. Sailway PTO Marco's Pizza Diet Donate Fundraiser, which will be held the first Thursday each month through fund, through fund nights at Sailway. BES PTO iPad Raffle, September 9th through 30th, to fund library, cozy and wheels, and parent info nights. The Athletic Booster Spike Out Cancer, September 25th, 2014, to the American Cancer Society. Booster Club Halloween Party, October 25th, 2014. Booster Club Chili Cook Off, January 24th, 2015. Booster Club Mardi Gras, February 1st, 2015. The Booster Club Night of the Racing League, 25th, 2015. People's iPads. Was it either one iPad or shared separate?
Mrs. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Harding? Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
A question that was not the Band Booster years ago that raised that need. It was the, you know, the conventionism to the last.
With, we want to discuss it later with the treasurer. She's got some things to add.
So I just wanted to go over the free and reduce lunch numbers with you. This is the page that is completed in the CCIP, the application for federal programs. So you're required to put in the enrollment and then the free and reduce numbers to come up with a percentage. Our overall percentage is 42.79%. The elementary is 55.91%. Middle school, 41.92%. And the high school is 36.5%.
It's high, but it's down. It's 8% and it's 49. Now, it's 50, it's 38, something like that, 38, about a year.
We also got our CCIP application proofs. So that's always good to get that down.
Hold the light, too, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is a really high number for the elementary students. So we're gonna have to really look at that. I don't know if it's, like, if that's something that.
I got these numbers from Kathy.
Yeah, I'm, not that the numbers are wrong, but really we're gonna have to work with our elementary staff.
Our school's gonna make sense. Your youngest group of adults, as you can.
Facility project. Okay, on 8D, we're going to recommend a resolution to award bid package 27 Technology to Lake Tech Communications Incorporated in the amount of $587,252. And attachment H is connected to this. You can see a letter from Blue Space outlining what the package entailed. And there's a breakdown on the next page.
Any questions? Just for the public record, this is a company that I've worked for and I'm not a member of any, or a major company or a legitimate commission or any of those. Just so that's out there. I would be pleased to have a discussion at this time.
Ray? Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mrs. Sands?
Yes.
Mr. Hayek?
Yes.
Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
We'll move on to item number eight, E. Purpose of the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, compensation of employees, or the investigation of charges with complaints of this employee or student unless employee or official or student is also public here. Yes, this is something we're, official only, the priority of that is.
Mr. Hayek?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Harding? Mrs. Sands?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
We will come back to item number nine, which is our consent agenda. Superintendent Treasurer recommend the Board of Education to approve consent agenda items. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the consent agenda. If all items are adopted by one single motion of us, the members of the Board, the Treasurer, or the Superintendent request that any such item be removed from the consent, the consent agenda and go on separately. We've got A is renewed September sixteen, four minutes. B, approved minutes of the meetings from August eleventh, fourteenth, and twenty-eighth, 2014. C, approved agreement to provide services to visual impaired students with Cleveland Sight Center. D, approved agreement with information of technologies and training to provide additional services to special needs student for the fourteen fifteen school year, three hundred sixty-five dollars an hour. E is to approve agreement for educational services in Wood County, juvenile detention center and juvenile residential center northwest of Iowa, three hundred sixty-four dollars paid. Approved the Spanish students travel to Puerto Rico from February twenty-seventh, fifteen to March third, 2015, under supervision of teacher Maria Luisa Aguirres. Approved agreement regarding Ohio Schools Council Lake Area Educational Media Consortium for the fourteen fifteen school year. Approved agreement on participation for Ohio Schools Council fourteen fifteen cooperative purchasing program at three hundred four hundred dollars. Approved the fourteen fifteen school year school while hotline agreement with McNamara through North Point Educational Services Center. J, approved purchase of compass learning interactive educational software at the cost of forty-five thousand dollars. K, approved changing the date of commencement from June seventh to May thirty-first, 2015. L, approved a service agreement with Educational Service Center in Orange County for psychological, for a psychologist's service, services, five days a week for the fourteen fifteen counter treatment. M, approved the following employment actions as listed.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sands?
Yes.
Mr. Hayek?
Yes.
Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Item number ten was to discuss items to approve consent agenda. There's nothing there. And item eleven would be a second public participation.
Well, second one, we talked about, oh. This is a small room. You got to tell them. Oh, you part worse. The first day of school, we opened up and buses ran on time and everything. But I really think needs right now, because of all the construction and the really odd, crazy patterns the buses have to make because of Sanford, I sat in a park a lot and witnessed what could have been fifteen accidents. Because the students were run out early for a fire drill or something. The buses were coming in. Parents were parked along where the buses needed to go. Kids were trying to get out in front of buses. They were beeping. I saw students flipping off bus drivers. We're asking them to hold off. So we really, you know, it seems at least until everybody gets used to the new patterns, that we should have some adult supervision there to keep kids from running across the streets and bus drivers everywhere. And so it just got a little bit crazy.
Talking front drive?
The front drive, right in front of the high school.
At dismissal.
At dismissal. It was a little bit insane.
It was a rapid release fire drill. And it was bad.
But then the car, then the students, and they're all young students, want to get out in front of the buses. And they're coming, cutting through the parking, the buses have to loop through the parking lot now that the students are parking. It was crazy.
I would let Mr. Lamb know about the lack of supervision out there. I've tried to get out there at dismissal the last couple of days. Haven't been there, witnessed it myself. So I will be there tomorrow. I'll talk to Mr. Lamb and be sure that we have people, more people there in place. Like you said, until the people get used to the routine. That's still, we still should have adult supervision out there year-round. So let me find out what's happening with that. And we'll be sure that that happens.
I found a savory to sit and wait till the lots are empty.
You shouldn't have to do that. So we'll do our best to make that effective. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, we move on to item twelve, which is recommend a resolution. Here's the thirteen person. Let's go, let's skip twelve and thirteen. For the thirteen, that's the date, location, future board meetings. I'm assuming that you can hear for the immediate future.
Everyone's okay with this location, otherwise?
How are the acoustics?
We're worried about the air conditioning. We're freezing.
Before you guys got here, we're. Well, that's your school hours.
We need money for the Gill House. Turn the air up and put money towards Gill House.
You have no idea how hot it was in the other building. I mean, it was just awful. Let's, let's.
See, your web portal still says the meeting at the other building. I was saying they want their, their cars in the lot.
Yeah, we've got some more to do on our website. We have a special meeting Wednesday. That's not necessary.
We'll know by tomorrow. I'll have to let you know by tomorrow.
And if they don't have the bid back, we still have to sometimes soon have that special meeting.
I'll also want you to leave it on there. You can vote on it and it goes canceled. So we have a meeting September tenth, October thirteenth, and tenth. That's the new date that avoids. No, the third is. Third. It was the tenth of November. Now it's the third. Tenth, you know, I'm not gonna be here, but all of us are good.
I'm requesting a meeting in fourth October. We need to know the forecast for it. I will be making it first of October. And so I don't know if you want to do that now or?
Yes, right now it's a two weeks out. So October, maybe the twentieth.
Maybe a little bit later.
Twenty-seventh. Do you have a schedule? Should I do a calendar?
Yeah. What month?
Major school events?
No events showing now.
That's the October twenty-seventh. Or special. Seven o'clock here. Okay, so we have Wednesday, September tenth, seven o'clock. The October regular meeting, October thirteenth, seven o'clock. October twenty-seventh, seven o'clock for special meeting. November Thursday, the date for the November regular meeting. But we have Monday, December eighth for the December regular meeting. Hey, Jill, just some groupings happening. I mean, I know we made a kind of a policy to have, you know, additional meetings on here as a secondary backup. Look at the calendar from November into summer, or at least November. So since that's a solo, even, November third.
We used to have. November third, just so you know, that in this building, we're having our band review concert at the other end. So that we guys can know that that's going on.
Probably got Capitol tops the previous. What time is the start of? I was gonna ask a related question. I know you, we're gonna do the October twenty-seventh for the five-year forecast. What is the deadline on that?
It's the end of October.
Okay. Well, that's only six days away from the next meeting.
Yeah, what if you make the November after that?
Right.
No, I'm just saying, like, a week.
Like the seventh, seventh. I'd rather do it to seventeen. November seventeen. Yeah. Right. Okay, so we got October twenty-seventh.
So November seventeen.
So November third will change. Anything on November seventeen?
No, I did.
Show on, you got it?
Nothing there.
Nothing. September tenth, September tenth, October thirteenth, October twenty-seventh, November seventeenth, December eighth. And I guess this group of discussion purposes, we're looking at it in a second.
This is a kind of second concept?
So we are shifting November, the, which is the regular meeting.
For the band.
For the band. We're shifting it for the band.
We want to play so loud that you couldn't conduct your.
I would like to make a motion to reschedule our regular November meeting from the tenth to November twenty-second. Actually, the third. Can we officially do it to the third? We already voted on the third. We voted on the third. Okay. So I would like to make a motion to reschedule our, reschedule meeting, November third. Reschedule it to November seventeenth at seven o'clock, the Halloween High School. I'll second. Questions, families?
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Hayek?
Yes.
Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Mrs. Sands?
Yes.
Yes.
A little of the October twenty-seventh, I think, that really does make a lot of sense. With that, we'll go back to item twelve, which I recommend a resolution to review in session for purpose of employment of public employees. I'll move.
Yes.
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 Yes.